Good evening. Welcome to the 1,185th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda involving a question of zoning, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the city council, and the city council, after holding their own public hearing, makes the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on a request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petition. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to the city council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner has 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. Resolutions adopted by the city planning commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Bonjero?
Here.
Commissioner McHugh is absent. Commissioner Ventura?
Is here.
Commissioner Karamegno is absent. Chairman Willsaw is absent, and Commissioner Long, I guess I call you-
I'm here. Whatever you want to call me.
Call whatever.
I've been called worse.
Chairman, you are the chairman this evening.
The pretending one. And Mrs. Smiley is here as well.
And I am present, definitely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Also with us tonight from our planning department are Mark Tormina and Stephanie Reese. We will begin tonight with the public hearing section of our agenda. Will the secretary please read the first item?
Certainly. The first item is petition 22-02-02-02. It's submitted by Livonia Budget Storage LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section 6.58 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to operate a truck and trailer rental business in conjunction with an existing climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility at 29150 Seven Mile Road. It's located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Middle Belt Road and Parkville Avenue in the southwest quarter of section one.
Thank you. Mr. Armino?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to operate a truck and trailer rental business as part of an existing storage facility. This is the former Toys R Us building located on the north side of Seven Mile Road just east of Middle Belt. The parcel is 4.68 acres in size. It has 324 feet of frontage on the north side of Seven Mile Road and a depth of roughly 600 feet. As you can see here on the zoning map, the property is zoned C2 general business. There is an existing building. The storage facility is roughly 81,500 square feet in size. It's two stories, and it contains 749 storage units. Livonia Budget Storage received waiver use approval back on August 5th of 2020. This petition seeks an additional waiver under section 6.58 to operate a U-Haul truck and trailer rental operation. The site contains two separate parking areas. One is located in front of the building along Seven Mile Road. This lot has seven, or excuse me, eight spaces, including one barrier-free space, and is accessible 24 hours a day. The other is located on the west side of the building. This is the larger of the two lots. It has roughly 28 parking spaces, is gated to restrict access to employees and customers only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. The proposal would designate two spaces in front of the lot, in the front parking lot, that is, and then 20 spaces in the restricted parking lot for the purpose of rental vehicles. The vehicles would include a mix of cargo vans, panel trucks, and trailers ranging in size up to 26 feet in length. Of the 36 total parking spaces, we estimate that 22 of them would be used for the storage and display of rental vehicles, and the remaining 14 would be available for customers and employees of both Livonia Budget Storage and U-Haul. If we use the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation recommendations to estimate the required amount of parking for the storage business based on an average demand of 1.36 spaces per 100 units, a total of 10 parking spaces would be needed to support the needs of both the customers and the employees of the Livonia Budget Storage. So this would leave 14 spaces available, assuming that the maximum 22 spaces are used for, are occupied by U-Haul vehicles. 14 spaces available, four of which would be available for U-Haul customers. There are no other changes or improvements as proposed as part of this petition other than just the parking of the vehicles, again, both in the front and the side parking lot. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out the departmental correspondence.
Please.
First letter is from our engineering division. It's dated March 2nd, and it reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer, as well as private storm sewer. Since no changes in building services are planned, there should be no impacts to the existing facilities. It should be noted that the developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Wayne County Department of Public Service should any work occur within the Seven Mile Road right-of-way." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated February 22nd and signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Another letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated February 22nd and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from our inspection department, dated March 14th, and it reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above-referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted: The parking for this use is deficient under the new zoning ordinance. Council may modify the parking requirement based on evidence that another standard would be more reasonable per Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance section 9036. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated March 14th and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant for the city. And lastly, excuse me, second from last, is a letter from our treasurer dated March 11th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the treasurer's office has reviewed the name and addresses connected with the above-noted petition. At this time, there are no delinquent taxes due. Therefore, I no longer have objections to this proposal." That letter is signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And today, we received an email correspondence from Sue Clinton, Sue Clinton, excuse me, that reads, "Hi, my name is Sue Clinton, located at 19205 Parkville Street, Livonia, Michigan, 48152. Unfortunately, I am unable to make the planning meeting tonight due to family reasons. I am writing regarding petition 2022-02-02 in regards to the new storage facility located at 291507 Mile, wanting to operate a truck and trailer rental business. I would prefer they did not do this, as I do not want to look out my kitchen window or sit on my deck and have to view trucks sitting there by the wall. I don't believe that wall is tall enough to hide the trucks. During the time that property was vacant, there was always semis parking back there, and that was not a pretty sight, let alone having to listen to the trucks running all day and night for them to have their AC or heat on. I have attached a copy of the petition and two photos from my backyard. Thank you for your time, and I hope this will make it on the agenda tonight. Sue Clinton, 19205 Parkville Street, Livonia, Michigan." And that is the extended correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Armino. Are there any questions for staff?
Just one quick question for Mark. So we do have sufficient parking here?
Yes, so I explained this at the study session.
Yeah, I missed it, sorry.
Right, and so with the adoption of Livonia Vision 21, we established new standards for parking for storage facilities. That standard is based on one space for every 1,000 square feet of floor space. So that, given the fact that the building is 80,000 square feet, that would require some 80, some odd parking spaces, which is clearly more than what this site needs.
Yeah.
The ordinance goes on to state that if we feel that the standard is excessive, we can rely on an alternative standard, and that being the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation manual. And that's what I referenced today.
Okay.
And so our evaluation shows that there would be sufficient parking for the storage operation. I guess the question, then, is really how many spaces are needed for the U-Haul business?
Yeah.
The petitioner indicated at the study meeting that they would not start out with 22 vehicles. It would be something less than that, so that shouldn't be an issue initially. Later on, you know, as they increase the number of rental vehicles at the site, the question, then, is how many spaces are now available for customers to park on? You know, the people that leave their vehicles while they rent, or while the truck or the trailer is in use.
Okay, so as it stands now, we're good for right now?
Yes, I totally agree so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Will the petitioner please come to the podium here?
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Tormina? I'd like to start out by indicating that I'm proud to announce that Livonia Budget Storage, who I represent, is here today requesting this petition in order to expand, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Could you give your name and address?
Oh, yes, of course. My name is Brandon Grisco. I'm with the law firm Fosson Von. We're at 41700 Six Mile Road in Northville, Michigan.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I should have led with that. So I'm proud to announce that the business is expanding. We have with us today two generations of responsible business owners that are going to be, in part, operating this business. We've previously, as Mr. Tormina indicated, we've previously been before this commission and the city council for waiver use related to the existing indoor self-storage facility. And that sailed through planning commission, sailed through city council with no issue. And as far as I know, we haven't had any issues in the operation of that side of the house in the time that we've been operating. Since the build-out itself, just to highlight some benefits that they brought to the community, includes some aesthetically pleasing architectural features that you don't necessarily see in every development there along Seven Mile Road. So I think that's something that should be taken into consideration, as one of the better indicators of operations and certainly future operations is what has the past operations been like. And so to that extent, we do think that they've been good operators, and they've brought some benefit, certainly aesthetically to the community, and getting a vacant property up to date and back on the tax rolls and things like that. The business also recently joined the Livonia Chamber of Commerce and hosted a well-attended by city officials and local business owners open house and ribbon-cutting. That was a massive success. And I tell you this to highlight that the business is here to be a partner with the community, has been through the planning process, has, we think, certainly met the requirements of the zoning ordinance and of the waiver use. We had a spirited and lively discussion at the study meeting, and we actually have today a representative from U-Haul that would be available to answer any follow-up questions that came out of that. And I'm certainly here as well, to the extent that the commissioners have any questions, we'd be happy to address and answer those. And Mr. Bonjero, I think you said you weren't here for the study session, so if there's anything I can answer for you, or Jesse from U-Haul here, please let us know. We'd be happy to take care of that tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Any members of the commission have questions? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Grisco, just to kind of clarify the parking situation, at the study session, you told us that when somebody comes to rent a truck, they park their personal car in the space where the truck is stored on-site. Do I have that correct?
That would be the case only if the person were leaving their vehicle.
Right.
And not necessarily indicating that it would be that specific space, but certainly an open space.
Well, it wouldn't be a customer's space. What I'm trying to clarify, and what I'm uncertain about, is the adequacy of parking for all of the operations at this business. So you have people coming to the storage center, and they're going to drive their car into the storage building. Is that correct?
Yes, if they're unloading, yes.
Right, okay. And if somebody came with them to assist them, they could either ride in their car, or they could come in a car and need a place to put it while they unloaded their truck or trailer in the storage facility.
Potentially.
Okay. So there's a possible use of spaces. And then people that were coming to rent a space in the storage facility that can't get past the gate because they don't yet have a number, they'd be parking in the spaces in front.
Presumably, yes.
Okay. So with only 14 parking places on the entire site dedicated to folks that might be accompanying people using the storage facility, and potential new customers stopping in to either start or stop their business with the storage facility, I'm concerned that when people come to rent trucks, I thought at the study session you indicated that they would be placing their, if they left a car, and I don't know what percentage that is, maybe somebody from U-Haul does, if they left a car, they'd be leaving it in the space where they took the truck from, which seems to make sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that an accurate general description of the parking situation here and the demands?
I guess I'll defer to Jesse to answer that question, as he's very familiar with U-Haul operations. I'll only say that the plan is obviously that we're going to have parking for everybody that's going to use the business, based on market demands that I think Jesse's going to talk about here, and not to have cars parked, you know, willy-nilly around the lot. But the idea being that everybody is going to have a space as needed, but Jesse, please.
I guess I'd ask one other follow-up question. What's the ratio of trucks versus trailers? I'm assuming you're going to have both.
Yes, there are plans to have both trucks, trailers, and, I believe-
I think you're going to address that as well.
As well. Jesse, if you would, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Jesse Brown, representing U-Haul. To get with, to help you understand the parking situation, we have two different types of customers. We have customers that are doing odds and ends for their home, so they're keeping the equipment for short hours, parking a vehicle at the location where they're renting from, you know, renting a truck, coming back, picking up their vehicle. We also have customers that are moving out of town. So those customers obviously will not be leaving a car at the facility. The ratio is probably around 50%, to be honest with you, with the different types of customers that we do have. We have overcome parking situations exactly how you're describing it. If a truck is being rented, the customer will park their vehicle in a designated, you know, rental's location, and that's worked out quite well. I don't, the question of having 20 U-Haul vehicles at a location at one time is probably to the extreme. I think our goal is they're not sitting, you know, we want them to be on the road helping families out. So if there's, you know, a maximum amount of equipment sitting at a location, then there's probably an issue.
Okay, I think that gives us a good overview of how you handle the parking there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mrs. Smiley?
Did you want to go, first of all, we need your address for the record.
Okay.
And then, secondly, did you want to go over your hours of operation and how, I mean, what if I rented the truck and you closed at 6:00, and I come back, can I have access to my car? Can I drop off the truck? I mean, what happens then?
So us, as a company, we have pushed to have the customer returned during open hours.
Okay.
And that's mainly for a customer service point of view, to be honest with you. That's to make sure that the customer didn't occur any problems with the equipment. If there is a situation where a customer can't utilize that option and they need to return after hours, we call it, there is, they may, there may be a possibility that a truck is parked outside the secured gate area. If you parked your vehicle behind the secured area, then the location would most definitely give you a access code to get out of it, from our experience.
Your hours of operation are?
I don't know what they are at that location.
You have to come to a microphone.
And also, please provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Raquel Monti. I'm General Manager for Storage in U-Haul. Our hours will be Monday through Friday, 9 to 6:00, Saturday, 9 to 4:00, and Sunday, 9 to 2:00.
And so that, during those hours, that's the only time they could get in and out of the secured gates?
We will be providing, if absolutely necessary, a temporary code that we change frequently to customers to retrieve their vehicle so that they're not locked out of the gate if they are going to be returning within, not within our hours. So we have 24 hours that they can access U-Haul system online, so that when they return the truck, they can check their truck in online, and then they can retrieve their vehicle, and we'll give them a temporary code that they can use if it's absolutely necessary that they can't return before we close.
Okay, and could I have your address for the record?
13120 Hall Road, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48313.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions?
Chairman, I have one other question.
I'm going to go to Mr. Bonjero first, he was a little quicker.
I just, was I, am I understanding that you wanted to leave a couple vehicles out in front for advertising?
For advertising and more for business operations, we do offer a contactless rental system right now. With the climate and the pandemic, we're trying to ease that a bit, so customers can do everything through their mobile device. With that, we would rather have vehicles not in the secured area. We would rather have them out front for access to them.
Okay, does moving them behind the fence impede advertising, in your view, at all, or no?
Um, no, I-
The point I'm asking is because that fence is like, it doesn't block anything.
No, and I-
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I, I mean, the equipment, as long as the equipment behind the fence is properly staged, we're going to call it, I think the display will be perfectly fine. I think more so the equipment parked up front in those two parking spaces is going to be for the contactless pickup system.
Gotcha. Yeah, I see it, I don't see it like, I think behind the fence won't hurt advertising at all, because when I was there today, you can see everything, you know what I mean? So if it was a privacy fence, it was solid or something, I could see it, but you can, it won't impede any way to see those vehicles.
Right, no, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Ventura?
We have a letter that Mr. Tormina referenced from a neighbor, talking about trucks sitting in the back of the lot idling prior to the establishment of the storage structure there. Will there ever be a time when you have trucks sitting back against that, or anywhere on the lot, just sitting there idling for a long period of time?
So without having that particular citizen here to address and ask exactly what she's talking about, I'm assuming that she's talking about what we've seen with, say, like, the South End Walmart, where in the after-hours time, say, at night, semi-trucks will pull in that have too many hours on the road, and so under the federal trucking regulations, they got to pull off for a certain amount of time before they can resume their trip. And that is something that obviously the City of Livonia has taken aggressive enforcement measures against down in the South End, and something that may or may not have occurred, you know, when this was a vacant site. Obviously, in this situation, the site is going to be restricted access, and so there's not going to be semi-trucks back in here idling, making any noise, giving off any fumes or anything like that. Additionally, I believe the area that the citizen is referencing is the area that's on the northeast end of the building, which would be the closest to that neighborhood. Where we're talking about parking the trucks based on the site plan that's up there, the orange highlighted area is going to be all the way to the west, which is literally as far away from this person's house as we can get, so I don't necessarily see that being an issue. I hope the commissioners take that into consideration.
I think you've characterized her concern well in relating it to the Walmart situation at Wonderland, and I thank you for that. I think that's a good solution.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for the petitioner? I do have a question for Mr. Brown, if I may. So obviously, you know, there's a limited number of parking spaces there, and that's the, you have a maximum of how many vehicles you can have there, but how does U-Haul determine how many U-Hauls to put at this location? Is there some kind of a market study? You know what kind of demand is there? And what do you start with? You start with, like, four trucks, and then you build it up? How does that work?
It is based off of the location itself, the facility itself. As a company, we have a team in place that enforces the logistics side of things. Obviously, we don't want this place to be loaded with 50 trucks. That's not our goal. So to answer that, yes, I think the demand in that area justifies a steady flow of, you know, 10 to 15 trucks at all times. There may not be sitting there at all times. That's the goal.
Right.
There may only be, you know, four or five trucks sitting there, but we do have data that supports that the City of Livonia, you know, justifies the rental community and the people that need to utilize these vehicles.
Okay, I thank you for that. I have one more follow-up question, I guess, on, some of your business is one-way rentals.
Correct.
Is it pre-arranged where, if I'm moving to Livonia from Florida, I don't know why I do that, but if I'm doing that, at least not in the winter. In the summer, it's a wonderful place to be. But if I'm doing that, is it pre-arranged that I'm dropping the U-Haul truck off at this location, or do I, am I able to just drop it off anywhere? What I'm worried about, what I don't want to see is a run where all of a sudden you have more U-Haul trucks than parking spots, and we have-
If that's the case, if the location is at their max capacity, we have tools in place that would allow a customer to select a more, another convenient location instead of the one they're initially picking. So it's really based off of the customer. If that's where the customer's moving, they have a max allotted truck sitting there, we're going to try to divert that customer to a location that is not at max capacity.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll hear questions from the floor. Is there anybody in the audience who is interested in speaking for or against this petition? Full auditorium. Going once, going twice? Okay, no questions from the audience, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to operate a truck and trailer rental business in conjunction with an existing climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility at 29150, excuse me, Seven Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the outdoor storage of U-Haul trucks, vans, and trailers shall be limited to designated areas within the secured parking lot only, and no U-Haul trucks, vans, or trailers shall be stored in front of the building, except those returned after the hours the security gate is locked. Number two, that no U-Haul trucks, vans, or trailers shall be parked in front of the building between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., seven days per week. Number three, that the total number of rental trucks, vans, and trailers available at this location shall not exceed 20. Number four, that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of the passing motorist shall be prohibited. Number five, that there'll be shown no out- Number five, that there'll be shown no, there shall be no outdoor storage of auto parts, scrap material, waste petroleum products, junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles, or other similar items in connection with this operation. Number six, that the only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And number seven, pursuant to Section 13 dot one three, of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless an appropriate permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura, is there support?
Support.
Mr. Bonjero, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have just one question, is there any way we could accommodate the no-contact picking up of a truck? I guess that would entail having one of the trucks outside between the hours of 10 and 9. I like no-contact, I like that, you know, is there-
There is a use for it these days, right?
Right.
Well, I will pose that to the maker of the motion.
I don't know how you do it, though.
Mr. Tormina, do you have any ideas on-
I, you know, the, maybe this is a question for the budget storage operators, because if I understood correctly, under unique circumstances, maybe including this contact system, contactless system, they could provide the access code to get them in the back.
Oh, okay.
The contactless, I'm assuming that's just, you go on your app, phone app, or whatever, you rent it, you, you, you go to the site to pick the vehicle up, and then the key is already in the vehicle, and you can access, access the storage compartment on the side of the truck, I think, to, to access the key, and away you go. So as long as they can get access to the secured parking lot via Livonia budget storage, then they can still do the contactless operation, that's my understanding now, but that's my question for her.
Ms. Monte, could you please approach and... So what the, what the motion on the table is, is an approval, however, without having the trucks out front. So if you had a contactless pickup, would the people be able to access the gate, are you able to provide them a code in order to get behind the security gate in order to pick up a truck?
Yes.
Okay.
We're able to put multiple codes in the system for, just for the specific use of U-Haul use, and so there's a program when they go in and retrieve their truck, that they can access that code once they go through the process, and it'll give them that temporary code, they can go back, get their vehicle, the key will be in a designated location, and then they can dispatch their truck.
Great, we wanna make sure that you're able to do business, and so, thank you, Ms. Monte.
Ms. Smiley, are you up?
I'm fine with that, yep.
Great.
I'm just not real techno.
Thank you, okay.
I'm impressed, you can do that.
So we have a motion with support, and our question has been resolved, so if we're good, we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Ventura.
Aye.
Commissioner Bonjero.
Aye.
Smiley votes aye, Chairman Long.
Aye. And the motion passes, four to zero. So your, your petition will move on to City Council with an approving resolution, thank you, and good luck with your, with your business. If the secretary would please read the next item.
The next item is petition oh-two dash zero-two dash zero-two dash zero-three, it's submitted by Tissio Architects Incorporated on behalf of Plymouth Auto Sales, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.05 and 6.06 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance to operate a used auto dealership with repair facilities and outdoor display of vehicles at 36534 Plymouth Road. It's located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Levann and Market Street in the southwest quarter of Section 29.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to operate a used auto dealership, the site is on the north side of Plymouth Road, just west of Levann Road. The property consists of a single parcel that measures 2.6 acres in area with 290 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road, and has a depth of 397 feet. The zoning, as you can see, is C2 general business, the site contains a 12,095 square-foot commercial building that is currently occupied by Dick Scott's Freedom Powersports. Waiver use approval was granted to Freedom Powersports back in 2011, the conditions of approval restricted the operation to motorcycle sales and displays only, and because Plymouth Auto Sales is seeking to display and sell vehicles other than motorcycles, a new waiver is required. Bordering the site to the west is the Body Rock Fitness Center, to the east is Timeout Bar and Grill, both zoned C2 general business, to the north are industrial properties, and then across Plymouth Road are variety, variety of commercial uses, also zoned C2. Per the zoning ordinance, there are several special requirements that apply to new and used car lots, as well as light truck repair, light automobile and truck repair facilities. Some of these include that no vehicle shall be parked within 20 feet from the front lot line, or at the side lot line adjacent to a street. The total number of vehicles proposed to be displayed or stored shall be subject to the recommendation of the Planning Commission, approval by City Council. Outdoor storage of disabled, damaged, or unlicensed vehicles is strictly prohibited, all repair, repair work must be conducted within enclosed building, and the repair, repair shall not permit bumping, painting, spraying, or rust-proofing. An interior layout or floor plan was submitted that shows how the site, how the building would be divided into the various uses, shows a showroom, an office, as well as a service area where vehicles would be repaired, that would be located at the rear of the building. The repair operations, as was indicated at the study meeting, would be open to the general public. The service area would consist of four service bays, or repair bays, that would be accessible via two overhead doors that are located at the rear of the building. The upper level of the building, which totals about 1,800 square feet, would be used for additional offices, as well as storage, a conference room, and a kitchen. Currently, there are, there is parking for approximately 30 cars within a paved lot on the west side of the building, additional vehicle storage is provided within a gravel lot that is located at the rear or the north end of the property. Plymouth Auto Sales is proposing to expand the paving on the west side of the property for vehicle display and customer parking. The gravel lot at the rear of the property would be maintained for both employee parking as well as vehicle storage. So the expanded parking lot would contain 105 spaces, 88 of these would be used for vehicle display, and the remaining 17 would be used for customers. The gravel lot, on the other hand, would provide inventory storage for about 37 vehicles, plus 17 spaces would be dedicated for employees, including the second-floor office. The gravel lot would be enclosed with fencing, including a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence that would run across the, the front of the storage lot, and then chain-link fencing would be used along the sides and the rear. Access would be provided via a 22-foot-wide gate that is located in the southeast corner of the lot. So let me just get everyone familiar with the plan here. So going back to the aerial, this shows you the existing parking area, again, for about 30 cars. This is the site plan showing the expanded parking lot, this, everything below this line here would be paved. So this is the paved lot that would contain roughly 105 spaces, the area shown in orange here, there's these, as well as two up front of the building, and four in the back, which is shown in a blue color, these would all be used for customers of both the auto dealership as well as the, the repair operation. The gravel storage lot is located here, at the, on the, at the rear of the property, this, on the other hand, would allow for the storage of about 37 cars, and then another 17 spaces would be allotted, this is the blue and the yellow spaces would be assigned to employees of both the dealership, as well as future spaces for the, for use of the office on the upper level of the building. Required parking is based on both the sales and the service operations. For sales, the ordinance requires one parking space for each 200 square feet, for the repair, the ordinance requires two spaces per bay plus one employee. Additionally, the second-floor office requires space, one space for every 200 square feet, so when you add all these up together, there are 42 spaces that are required for the customers and employees of the businesses, including the second-floor office. The site plan, as you see here, assigns 34 spaces for customer employees, resulting in a shortage of eight spaces. Onto the landscape plan. So landscape, new landscaping is shown throughout the site, including along Plymouth Road, the front of the building, the west and the north property lines, and within the parking lot. As required, all display vehicles would be set back 20 feet from the right-of-way. Based on the length of the road frontage, the site is required to have no fewer than six full-size trees, three ornamental trees, and 48 shrubs. Additionally, an area measuring 2,720 square feet is required for landscaping within the parking lot, and this would also include the planting of 14 trees. The plan does show, does meet all of these requirements, the one exception to that is, is the, the area along the east side of the property, where the ordinance requires a planting strip, that is not possible, given the, the fact that there's a, an asphalt drive that runs along the entire east side of the property, and as indicated earlier, provides access to the rear storage lot. No outdoor trash enclosure is shown, instead, all refuse, including tires and auto parts would be stored inside the building. Terms of site lighting, proposed exterior lighting includes multiple pole-mounted LED fixtures that measure 20 feet in height. We do have new data that provides a photometric plan and shows the illumination levels, these average roughly 10-foot candles throughout the display lot, that is something that the Planning Commission and City Council can approve. Based on the fact that no residential areas would be affected by the development, it seems reasonable and is in line with other recent dealership properties or developments that we've reviewed. Underground stormwater detention will be required, and this is something that is shown that underground, located underneath the gravel storage lot. In terms of changes to the building, the building currently has a, an asphalt-shingled mansard roof, that would be removed and replaced with a vertical canopy system that would be finished with composite wood material, and other than that, the only other major improvements would be painting the existing brick and block on the front and the sides of the, the building. In terms of signage, there, they'll be allowed one wall sign measuring 80 square feet in total area, and one monument sign, that would be 30 square feet maximum in area. And with that, I will read out the correspondence.
Please.
We have a letter from our engineering division dated March 2nd that reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer, as well as private storm sewer. According to the proposed plans, there should not be impacts to the sanitary sewer or water main. The owner does show proposed stormwater detention that will be required to meet the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, which we will review when engineering drawings are submitted for permitting. It should be noted that developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Michigan Department of Transportation should any work occur within the Plymouth Road right-of-way." That letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated February 22nd that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulation. Subject buildings are to be provided with an automatic sprinkler system, and onsite hydrants shall be located between 50 feet and 100 feet from the fire department connection, NFPA 14, 2019, 6.4, 5.4." That letter signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next, a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated February 22nd, and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter from the Inspection Department that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, the number of parking spaces is deficient due to the number of display vehicles shown, planning and/or City Council may wish to address this. Two, the gravel area in the rear of the property shall be hard-surfaced and striped if used for parking. Three, proposed cha, six-foot chain-link fence and the six-foot privacy fence would require a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This department has no further objections to this petition." Next is a, a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated March 8th, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And last, we had a letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated March 3rd, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Tormina, on the site plan that shows the lots, are we making a distinction between the lot to the north, as, we're calling that the storage lot, and the lot to the south as the display lot, is that accurate?
That's accurate, the, the lot to the north is also employee parking as well, so-
But it's being referred to on these plans as storage and display.
Yeah, the main display lot, obviously, is the paved area here, and this would be used for inventory storage as well as employee parking, so yeah, storage and display is how we've separated it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Any other questions? Mark, I have one, and I think it was the letter from Inspection, from somebody, it mentioned that the storage lot had to be a hard surface, and at the study meeting, we discussed the, what the petitioner's plans were for that, would, what the petitioner proposed at the study meeting, would that, pass that test?
Well, as a, as a, well, if you're talking about the rolled millings, if that's the material that was being used, that's a decision that engineering will have to make ultimately. They, they, they approve the final surfacing, and council, so if the, if the request is to use rolled millings or gravel, and council accepts that, that'll be subject to final approval by the Engineering Division.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Bonjero.
Just a follow-up to Glenn's point, so that, the millings, is that just for the storage area, or is it gonna be one consistent surface?
That would only apply to the storage area. The, the plans, I believe, are showing asphalt paving for, for the, for the westerly lot, for the display lot. Petitioners should verify that, have it on the record that that is gonna be hard-surface asphalt, but I believe that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, so, all right, any further questions? Hearing none, if the petitioner would please approach, state your name and address for the record.
Bonjour, Ben Tissio, Tissio Architects, 19815, Fermenton Road, Livonia. Thank you, and thank you, Mark, for pointing out that they did the photometrics, that was my bad, I thought when I ordered and got the cut sheets for the light poles, I, I ordered the photometrics, but I did not, and it's probably my consultant's fault for not reading my mind, so, I'll blame it on her. The, a couple of questions about the gravel issue, yes, we have the, the vinyl fence separating the front, which is all gonna be paved asphalt area, and the rear will be gravel, like has been granted on other properties in Livonia. I know that there's numerous locations that do have a gravel, matter of fact, we got it approved not too long ago on a storage facility off of Maryman Road that had four acres basically gravel, part of milling and also some kind of gravel or crushed concrete as a base underneath that. So we would prefer to do it that way. And again, the city has approved that in the past, both the Engineering Department as well as Planning Commission and City Council. Just as a footnote, if, if it's approved tonight, we would ask that we get a request of a seven-day waiver, so we can get on the April 4th, planning, City Council meeting, that is, if it's allowed, if staff has time to do it, all the conditions up above, so if we could waive that seven-day waiver, we'd appreciate that. And I, I think everything's been answered, I mean, the building's gonna be enhanced, we're not changing much of the signage, matter of fact, the ground sign is gonna stay just the way it is, we're just taking the panels out and putting new panels in. The owner- The owner wanted to remove the mansard roof because he felt it was dated, and it is, and that's why we provided a new one. And one of the things that we did do in the photometrics after I received it, we did relocate some of the light poles. We actually added a few in the back to enhance the lighting for that area.
Okay.
So, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for the petitioner? Mrs. Smiley.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
I'm sorry, let Julian come up.
Okay.
Name an address for the record, please.
Julian Scheinlari, address 50470, West Phallus Creek Court, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170.
Thank you.
Hours of operation, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 10 to 4:00.
Okay, and what kind of security do you have on this particular lot? Yeah, will they be able to have access to that back lot?
No.
No?
No, that would be locked.
Okay, and there's just like one line of cars that are for customers? They're in the kind of light beige color?
Yes, that's our customer parking, yep.
Okay. Okay, and is this called before the PRDA or?
It has not.
Do they need to do it?
There won't be time.
Okay.
There might be something that, actually, the resolution, the prepared resolution asks that they do that following the review of the site plan.
Okay, are you aware of the Plymouth Road Development Authority?
I am not.
Okay.
I was, but I apologize. I didn't believe this is for not doing any work in the right-of-way, we would need to do that, so I wasn't aware that that's a requirement. Did I misunderstand that?
It is not a requirement. They're usually courtesy reviews.
Okay.
So, oftentimes, the PRDA will make recommendations, but it's, unfortunately, we didn't have time, in this case, to present this to the PRDA prior to the Planning Commission's review.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions? Mr. Bonjero?
So, on that gravel in the back, if it's going to, it is going to be used for parking, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, in Jerome Hannah, the building official's letter, it said it had to be hard-surfaced and striped. Are you going to stripe it? Do you stripe gravel, as if it's gravel?
Yeah, we would be able to, again, the storage facility we did on Merriman Road, that was just under four acres, was going to be striped.
Okay.
You can't do that, but it's a reoccurring event, like annually.
Because it's gravel, I can't imagine you can stripe it.
Well, you can, but again, you're going to have to do it annually.
Okay, so, because these spaces are going to have to be defined? Is that correct? I mean, I don't know, maybe we're making something out of nothing.
Yeah, I mean.
It just seems like it's conflicting, but.
But the, the storage area for the cars that are going to be serviced, those areas, there's no reason to really stripe that. But yes, the employee area is yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Mr. Ventura?
Ben, at the study session, we talked about the spaces highlighted in blue-green behind the fence there and right in the middle are reserved for potential tenants of the second-floor of the building.
Yes.
I thought I understood that there was going to be a gate adjacent to those spaces that the tenants could walk through to get to the upper right-hand corner of the building where the entrance to the second floor is. Did I misunderstand something? Because I don't see it on.
Yes, that was not my understanding.
Okay.
No, they have the gate on the far east side.
That's the only gate, so that.
That's the only gate.
Walk around and then walk down to that corner of the block.
Correct. And we don't anticipate really a second-floor tenant there. The spaces there, a client didn't purchase it to lease it out. If he happens to get lucky in three years and find a tenant for it, so be it. But it has to be on his terms simply because of the security issue and the purpose of purchasing the site is for the used car sales, not to lease it as a.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good challenge there.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I'm glad you're not out to lease it.
You're going to have to find someone that wants no public access, that is a hermit, wants to work on the second floor with staff, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any further questions?
One more.
Mrs. Smiley, go ahead.
Yeah, did you want to tell us a little bit more about, you said mostly you're able to get these cars through auctions, or you buy them online and you sell them online? How that works?
Well, we're acquiring vehicles through auctions and local wholesalers and from other dealers in the area. We also do buy online, but we sell a lot of vehicles online without people coming actually into our facility in person. But also, the past two years of the pandemic, the business has changed quite a bit, just like any other business. We've gone from driving around, looking at cars, to shopping online. If you're financing, you're applying online. So, we've done all these things prior to someone coming and driving ten cars, and then, well, let's see what we can do now. So, what I mean to say is that most of our customers that are coming in are coming in on appointments. Very rarely do you see someone that's just driving by.
Yeah, okay.
So, we're going to have two salespeople on-site. So, two salespeople are going to have, at most, two or three to four customers at once. So, that's what we anticipate to have at once, at the most, is four customers at one time, just because we're scheduling customer to come in, just because we're selling vehicles online, just because the financing, everything is done prior. We've done a FaceTime video and showed the customer the car, so they have a perfect idea of what they're buying. When they're coming there, they're coming to sign, and they're gone. So, there isn't really a storm of buyers coming in and just kind of roaming the lot and making decision on the spot if they're buying the vehicle or not. And folks that live in the area and drive by and will see a car just driving by, I've seen them, a lot of times, they'll just pull in, drive around the lot, and then just pull out if they don't see something that is interesting. But, yeah, it's, very rarely do we have three, four customers at once in our lot, and that's why we don't want a lot of empty spots just sitting in the middle of our display. That's the reason for that.
Okay, it's also my understanding that you wouldn't buy like a crashed vehicle. You're buying vehicles that need very minor, like oil-changed tires?
We don't buy crashed vehicles. As a matter of fact, if any of you had a chance to go to our website, we have Carfaxes on there, and we don't sell vehicles that are crashed. Older vehicles do or have been into accidents, but they've been repaired in the prior, in the past. So, we're showing buyers the history of the vehicle right there online. So, with that being said, we couldn't really buy a crashed vehicle and then have this bad Carfax that wouldn't sell. But no, we would not be doing any bodywork or any sort of thing like that at our facility. It's strictly light repair and sales.
Okay, and finally, you're in business now doing this. You had some experience doing this?
Yes, so, we've been doing this for eleven years.
Okay.
We've been at the current location for a little over seven years, and prior to that, smaller location, which has gradually grew up in Plymouth. But, yeah, altogether, we've been in business for eleven years.
And you're purchasing this property?
We are purchasing this property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions? If not, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against this? Mr. Brown? You're our only, our only guest. Okay, since there are no questions from the audience, the Commission will close the public hearing, and motion will be in order.
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I offer an approving resolution.
Okay.
At the request to operate a used auto dealership with repair facilities and outdoor display of vehicles at 36534 Plymouth Road, is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as P1 dated February 12, 2022, prepared by Tissio Architects is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the number of vehicles to be displayed outdoors should be limited to a total of eighty-eight, and that no vehicle for sale shall be displayed closer than twenty feet from the front lot line. Number three, all parking spaces except the required handicap spaces shall be double-stripped at ten feet wide by twenty feet in length, as required. Number four, that except for what may be authorized under the zoning ordinance as part of a temporary sales event, any type of exterior advertising related to the sale of vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, such as promotional flags or streamers, shall be prohibited. Number five, that the display of any vehicle and car lifts is strictly prohibited. Number six, that there shall be no outdoor storage of auto parts, equipment, scrap material, waste petroleum products, junked, unlicensed, or inoperable vehicles, or other similar items in connection with this operation, and the overhead doors, when not in use for vehicles entering and exiting the service facility, shall be closed at all times. Number seven, that the hours of operation shall be limited to the following, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Number eight, that the landscape plan identified as L1 dated February 17, 2022, as revised, prepared by Elements Studio, Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number nine, that all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights-of-way, shall be sotted in lieu of hydroseeding. Number 10, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number 11, that the petitioner shall work with staff in the Plymouth Road Development Authority, PRDA, and plans to install additional landscaping and other streetscape improvements, i.e. brick piers and fencing, along Plymouth Road. Number 12, that the exterior elevations plan identified as P3 dated February 12, 2022, prepared by Tissio Architects, Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number 13, that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that should be of a compatible character, material, and color to other exterior materials in the building. Number 14, unless a trash dumpster is constructed on-site, all refuse, including tires, auto parts, shall be stored inside the building until such time as they are taken away by an appropriate contractor. Number 15, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 16, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number 17, that the storage of vehicles in the rear storage yard shall be limited to thirty-seven vehicles and parked in an orderly manner. Number 18, that the rear storage yard shall be resurfaced with crushed rock, gravel, or material approved by the Engineering Division prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the Inspection Department, and shall be maintained, and shall be properly graded and drained to dispose of all surface water and maintained in a dust-proof condition, provided, further, that pursuant to Section 9.10, the storage yard shall be hard-surfaced with a permanent type and thickness, determined type of pavement and thickness approved by the Engineering Department within two years from the date that the certificate of occupancy is issued unless waived by City Council. Number 19, that any lighting equipment added to the site shall be directed and shielded or hooded so that as to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways, and that the height of such equipment shall be limited to twenty feet. Number 20, that repairs and maintenance work on vehicles conducted on this site shall conform to Section 6.05 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, and such repairs as bumping, painting, spraying, or rust-proofing shall not be permitted. Number 21, this waiver use is granted to this petitioner only, and any new owner of this property is required to seek and receive City Council's consent to such users operating the subject facility prior to occupancy by such user. And number 22, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time an occupancy permit is applied for, and. Number 23, pursuant to Section 13.13 of this Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless the building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Bonjero?
Okay, ready?
Okay, any further questions?
I have just one, one suggestion. I'm not going to make it long. I'm only going to shorten that. Item number six, I don't see the need to include the requirement to keep the overhead doors closed. You know, that's something that we commonly see in repair operations, and since this is not even anywhere close to disturbing any residential properties, in fact, it butts up to industrial, I don't see the need to include that language if that's acceptable with the making of the motion.
It's fine with me.
Thank you.
Dave, are you okay with it, too?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, and we didn't start anything else, so we didn't go any further down the road, so we have an amended resolution. If you please read the roll.
Certainly, Commissioner Ventura.
Aye.
Commissioner Bonjero?
Aye.
Smiley votes aye. Chairman Wong.
Aye.
So, we have a four-nothing. It passes. Congratulations. It'll go on to City Council with an approving resolution. The petitioner did request a waiver. Is anybody willing to?
I would propose a seven-day waiver.
Okay, Mrs. Smiley, is there support?
Support.
Mr. Bonjero? And we do have to read the roll for that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Smiley votes aye. Bonjero?
Aye.
Commissioner Ventura?
Aye.
And Chairman Wong.
Aye.
So, we'll give it a waiver as well, and we wish you luck with your venture. Thank you. So, we'll put that to an end, and that will bring to an end the.
About the minutes, no?
Well, that concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting. We do have a miscellaneous item, but our minutes will not, we can't go forward with that because of our numbers and our absences and our quorum and stuff like that, so we're going to punt that one to, to the next meeting, and it will be Ian's problem. Is there any further business to come in front of the Commission today? Okay, that, well, that includes our agenda for this evening. We'd like to thank Livonia Television volunteers for their contribution to our meeting tonight. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Mr. Bonjero?
Support.
Mr. Ventura supports. No further business to come before the Planning Commission, we're adjourned the meeting at 8:08 p.m. Good night, Livonia.